It is now 6:30 and as we begin this evening, we ask that we do begin with a moment of silence for the memory of Officer Chase Maddox of Locust Grove and also the continued recovery of Sheriff's deputies Mike Corley and also Ralph Sid Callaway and also a healing for our community. So will you please join me in a moment of silence before we have our invocation? Thank you. We will now ask our Don Ash of our MA 911 Director to, who's with Zion Baptist Church in Hampton, to lead us in a word of invocation and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Let us pray. Eternal Father God, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, God. Lord, as we remember those, God, Officer Chase Maddox and his family, God, Deputy Callaway, Deputy Corley, God, and we remember those that are affected in Parkland, Florida, God. Lord, we ask you to continue to keep and bless us, Lord God, knowing that you can only bless America, God. So, Lord, we ask you to be in this meeting and bless it, God. Empower us to do your will, God. Bless our commissioners, God. Bless our leaders. Bless our community, God, and keep us focused on you in all we do. This we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting this evening and we now call it to order. We have a following on announcements regarding planting and zoning items that were advertised for this meeting but have been postponed at the request of the applicant. These cases will be rescheduled and the property will be reposted. The first item, planting and zoning item that has been rescheduled is the COM AM 1708 with the Hybris Properties of Conyers requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road west of McCullough Road. Second planted and zoning item is RZ 1715. It too is in District 2 and it is Hybris Properties of Conyers requesting a rezoning from RA to RS for the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road west of McCullough Road. The next public hearing of the planted and zoning item postponed is COMP AM 1709 for the Georgia Reserve of Conyers requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road west of McCullough Road. The next planted and zoning item postponed is RZ 1716 by the Georgia Reserve of Conyers requesting a rezoning from RA to MU, Mixed Use, for property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road west of McCullough Road. And then the public hearing of MC 1705 with Perrin Homes LLC of Duluth requesting a modification to zoning conditions for property known as Villages at Walnut Creek in District 2. That one too has been postponed. And then the public hearing of MDP 1704 of Green Valley Golf Club of Locust Grove, Georgia, requesting a modification to the master plan development for property known as Eagles Landing, as Eagles Brook Country Club in District 2. And then again, the proclamation item. So those are the planted and zoning items that have been actually rescheduled. Also, the other amendments to the agenda is that there would be the proclamation for the Psi Alpha Omega chapter has been postponed into March. So are there any other modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to item 6, because item 5 was actually removed from the agenda. Item 6 is District 3 Appointment to the Council on Aging and we have a resolution appointing Jenny Jenna Riffey to the Council on Aging and we call for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The appointment is approved. We're now moving to the consent agenda. The following items are considered for the consent agenda. We have under Public Safety, from the Police Department, a resolution to accept the donation of two Dell OptiPlex desktop computers valued at $700 from Steve Green. From the Fire Department, there is a resolution to accept the donation of $495 from Georgia Burn Reconstruction Centers of America LLC. And then from the Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Emergency Management Performance Grant from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. Are any of these items wished to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? This ends our consent agenda. We will now move into item 8, which is the County Manager and Leadership Henry to come and make a presentation. So we acknowledge Ms. Sherri Hobson Matthews and Ms. Tricia Cole-Petzer of the seat of McDonough for the presentation for Leadership Henry.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. I certainly will not stand before you all too long this evening because I do want to turn it over to Tricia Cole-Petzer who is representing the 2018 Leadership Henry class. Really excited about what she wants to present to you all tonight and I'm sure that you all will be excited as well. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Tricia to make her presentation and if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tricia Cole-Petzer and I'm proud to be part of the Leadership Henry class of 2018. As you know, County Manager Sherri was Leadership Henry class of 2017 and we have great footsteps to follow in. But our team this year, we are charged with completing a legacy project and a legacy project is intended to have a positive and lasting impact on the community. And so we have been through a number of ideas and suggestions and the one that we would ultimately like to do is to build a pavilion at the Bear Creek Senior Center in Hampton. Not only will it serve a senior's then, but it will also be for the children during summer camps. And I'd like to take an opportunity for a second just to have my Leadership Henry class of 2018 to stand up. And we have 28 in the class, but as you can see, we had a wonderful turnout tonight. Thank you. I would like to read something from Brenda Wesley. She is the manager for the Senior Center. Since opening in May of 2018, Bear Creek Senior Activity Center has experienced amazing support and participation from seniors. We have registered 1,265 new participants and the daily average attendance is 149 individuals. While we offer a variety of events each day, we have no outdoor activities available. We currently have an outdoor dining and sitting area that seats approximately 12 people. This area has been used for dining and relaxation. Our hope is to expand the area with a nature garden, pavilion, and shuffleboard court. There are immeasurable benefits of outdoor activities and gardening. Among them are increased physical activity, improved stability, lower blood pressure and relaxation. These areas would provide more opportunities for games, events, and socialization as well as opportunities to take active roles in the care of the garden. Our long-range goal includes the addition of a raised vegetable garden that would provide even more opportunities to engage with friends, nature, and intergenerational activities. Our desire is to provide activities that will encourage successful aging by keeping seniors physically active and socially engaged. And as you know, last year they did the summer camp there and they have a temporary pavilion put up so that the kids can get out of the sun, but there's no permanent structure and we would love to be able to contribute that to the area. And we're hoping to be able to do a sidewalk and hopefully enhance the garden as well with any funds that we raise in excess of those needed for the pavilion. We'll work closely with the County Manager's Office to make sure that everything is within the guidelines and are there any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes. I'd just like to thank you and Leadership Henry for what you're doing for us. Thank you so much.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none, this is a resolution regarding this pavilion to be built by Leadership Henry. The floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I move that this board approves a resolution approving the addition of the pavilion for Bear Creek Senior Center, which is in District 2. I'm so happy that you guys chose to do that and any support that we can do as a district, we would love to be able to help with that. Thank you.
We have a motion and there's a second. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our planting and zoning items and the first one that we have is a public hearing for AP 1703, Leslie Morrison of Stockbridge, appealing a zoning advisory board decision to deny a conditional use request for a religious facility located at 648 Ward Road in District 5 and we invite Ms. Dante Gibbs for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
On May 11th, 2017, the applicant requested from the zoning advisory board a conditional use for a religious facility located on Ward Road. The zoning advisory board denied their request and per our requirements in our UODC for an aggrieved individual party to appeal a decision by a zoning advisory board within 30 days. They met that by filing an appeal with the Planning and Zoning Department on June 9th of 2017. Between June 9th and now, there have been a number of schedules, postponements, tablings, and so on, which is fine. So tonight, what we have in front of you is an appeal of that denial of their conditional use request by the zoning advisory board. For the record, we are in receipt of a constitutional objection and just so that you all are aware that I'll put it on your head so you can see. We received that today and with that said, I will yield the floor to the representing legal counsel of the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners Newton Galloway and Stephen Jones here on behalf of Greater Vision Christian Ministry and Mr. and Ms. Morrison. The Morrison's on the property at which the church will be located and they are members of the church. As Mr. Gibbs said, this has had a long history. The property is zoned RA. They applied for a church as a conditional use. I do want to, before I discuss the appeal, I do want to raise one legal issue for the record with you. Under zoning procedures law, CGA 4666, Section 3, Subparts 4E, provide that a permit relating to the special use of property is a zoning decision and a zoning decision must be made by you. The Henry County Ordinance, Section 11.05.01, provides an evaluation of conditional use request is the responsibility of ZAB and then you hear it as an appellate body. We do believe that's improper, but let's put that to the side and let's talk about the merits of the appeal. Your ordinance sets out very specific criteria for a conditional use and your staff analyzed the Morrison's application for Greater Vision. The staff's application of those criteria found in favor of the application and they analyzed traffic congestion and found the application was compliant with your regulations on churches. They analyzed the physical condition of the tract and found that this property was suitable for a religious facility. They analyzed whether it had adequate public facilities and they found waters available, sufficient space for parking, and it had been approved by Henry DOT. Staff recommended three conditions, a dumpster, a D cell lane, landscape, and lighting plan, all conditions to which the applicant agreed. So the staff made a very positive recommendation to approve and then the zoning appeals board denied. Now, having done this work for a number of years and with a fair amount of gray hair to show for it, the denial of a church following a recognition from your staff that strongly favors it is interesting and odd. The county records show that since 2010, this board and ZAB have considered 22 special exception conditional use permit applications for churches, 21 considered by this board, one was by the City of Hampton, and only two have been denied. One in 2012, one in 2010, and in both of those instances and applications, the staff found that the church that made the application did not meet the lot size requirements, the setbacks, or it was not on a properly identified street under your public street classification system. Now, there is a statute, federal statute called RALUPA, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which very simply requires that religious facilities have to be treated equally. And that constitution, that plus the constitution requires that a church application be considered blindly. The standard in your ordinance is whether ZAB acted arbitrarily. And I would assert that if y'all have approved 20 churches previously that satisfied the site and conditions and received favorable recommendation from the staff as having met the development criteria and having found that the application of the criteria set forth in your ordinance for a conditional use permit or met, and if the proposed conditions that have been suggested by staff and intended to ameliorate impact have been consented to by the applicant, that the application, this application's denial looks arbitrary and probably satisfies that standard. We would ask simply that you follow your ordinance and follow the staff's recommendation. We don't know why this one was denied, but as I said, the denial of a church with those recommendations looks odd. And we don't know what happened between staff and ZAB, but we can correct this tonight and we ask you to do so. If you would, Madam Chair, there are several people from the church who would like to speak very briefly.
Well, we have a public hearing, so we'll begin that process in a moment. So...
Do you have any questions? I'm through.
I will now pause because I had a question, but let's, I see Commissioner Holmes has a question.
I just want to say, this is not odd at all. This church will sit right on top of residential property and those property owners have rights as well. They have rights to privacy, they have rights to quality of life. So that's why I'm going to deny this tonight when we get to that point because we have property owners here tonight that live in that area and they do not want the noise from a church or any other type of facility in that residential area. So with all due respect, I'm going to deny this tonight.
All right. Are there any other comments from the board or questions?
Madam Chair, could I respond to that very briefly?
You may.
Churches are commonly located in residential areas. Now, churches can be a zoning problem because they can range from being a very small church, which is what this will be, to a very large facility that's like an industrial complex. Look at Eagles Landing. I've got a similar facility at First Assembly outside of Griffin, First Assembly of God. It's huge. They can be and that's why your staff does a report to determine whether it is compliant with your conditions. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is not, this is not the Eagles Landing area. This is Fairview and the people in this area determine what's going to be in this particular area. So, you know, again, with respect to you as the attorney, I was elected to represent my district and the people in this community and I'm going to represent them by protecting their properties.
Populism is not a valid basis for denial.
Well, thank you for your comments. I do have a question and I'm not sure if this is for Dante because that constitution statement that was placed up just before he spoke, I just need some clarification about what that is.
Chair, I can answer that question. In Georgia, in order to challenge a zoning decision in the courts, you must first inform the Board of Commissioners that you object to the constitutionality of the underlying zoning and that's what that is. It's very common. It probably happens in every zoning case where a lawyer is involved.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, well, thank you. We will now enter into our public hearing session and those speaking in opposition will be given a total of 10 minutes for the whole group to speak. So if there's more than one individual who wants to speak, again, we'll only have a total of 10 minutes and then we'll again allow 10 minutes to those who want to speak in favor, including that of the presenter. So as you do come, please state your name and address and we will begin our 10-minute timeline for those wishing to speak in opposition.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Parks and this is my husband, David Parks. We are homeowners, which is right next to where they're trying, where they want to build it and it adjoined to our property. We just bought this home. We're there for retirement. My husband just retired from City of Atlanta Fire and we are Christians ourselves, but to put a church in our community, it won't be good for us. We do not like it.
One other thing, Chair. With that little small area that we live, we don't want to be, have it so congested that we can't even leave our own community. Now, I just heard the lawyer said that down in Eagles Landing, they have a large church. What does, why doesn't he think this church is going to get larger? You're going to put it in a residential community. I can see if I had moved next to a church, I wouldn't have an objection, but this, right here, you're going to move this church into our two-lane road to get into our community and get out. It's going to bring too much congestion and we're going to have so many strangers in our community now that I don't feel safe with my wife coming home at night. Now, if this was a church that truly wanted to be a part of this community, why didn't any of the parishioners ever come out to my house? Not one. Not one parishioner ever came up to my house. This is a sham.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And again, if you will state your name and address, but please speak to the board. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Partain. I've lived on the property all my life. I come from the hospital, three months old. I've been there forever and I have seen accidents right there at that intersection over and over. People have an accident, we've lost lives down there. And if we put a church in there, it's going to increase the traffic, which it's already hard to get only 155 as it is and all I can see is a nightmare. And even though you put in the extra lanes and traffic lights or whatever the case, we're losing lives now. We've already put up a traffic light at Penola just above there to try to cut down on this thing and we have a lot of people coming in, burning cars there on their property. I cannot see them unless you're going to change the ward drive, we're going to have more of an accidents than we are now. This is what I really objected. I'm not objected to church. I'm a Christian myself, but you can't swing a dead cat without hitting another church. They're all over the place and we're going to put another church in there? I don't see that and it's going to bring a whole lot of traffic that we do not need. That's all I got to say. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Melvin Rainin and I live at 205 Hernan Road in Ellenwood. Me and myself as well, I thank Representative Holmes for denying the request because we don't need a church in our community. We want to keep our community a community while we can grow our families and have, you know, and have it fun and a church like this would not do anything to enhance, it would dehance. And like I said, there's enough things going on in the area as it is and we don't want any other distractions. I mean, everybody who say they're Christian and come to the church, they're not always good people. Some people, life, it changes over the course, but it takes a while for that to happen and during that transition, all we see in our community is bad things happening. And like I said, we want to keep our community a community, a residential community, not within other kind of daycares and churches or anything else. As a matter of fact, I'm not trying to tell anybody where to move to, but there are several churches in the, on the area that look like they're baking and we got some strip malls up there that's very baking as well, which will probably accommodate them more than this little house that they have down here on Ward Road. So again, I thank you for listening to us and hearing our concerns and we just hope that this is the end of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Wheeler. I live on 125 Versailles Place, Ellenwood, Georgia, and I've also sent a letter in to our Commissioners and I am a Christian also, have no opposition to necessarily churches, but my concern is from a safety concern in that on that Ward Road, there are like some really deep curves that when people are coming around them, they're already crossing all over the lines and I just think when you start having that much traffic and congestion coming in there, it's going to create more of a safety hazard for the people that live in that community.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Calling again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
You know me, I'm Carl Swenson. I am not all that familiar with this particular parcel of property, but I just want to make a comment to all of those sitting behind me that if they come up here and approach you with ideas of infrastructure and traffic, you're going to be shot down because they don't care about infrastructure or traffic. The legal ease that is being used prevents all of you from dealing with that particular aspect, even though it's a huge, huge aspect to most of us here in the county. And I wish and I hope that at some point, you're going to reconsider this and consider what I put forward to you earlier and that is a moratorium on all of this until we catch up with the infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Calling again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Calling again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? We will now invite those, again, for a total of 10 minutes for those that wants to speak in favor of this zoning request. If you would state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Coward, and I live on 6535 Hern Road in South Bridge, Georgia. And I am in District Five. I've been there now over 18 years. I remember the first time when I met Mr. Holmes. It was actually in the post office. And he gave me some great ideas for our community and how he would help us to build a better community. And that's what I used to make my decision on voting for him. Now, I've lived there over 18 years. I've seen, I've seen a lot of things. I brought, me and my husband, we have brought children up, and now I have grandchildren. I've seen the community enhanced with businesses. I even seen the community enhanced with, you know, people moving to our, our neighborhoods. And I see the fact that this church would enhance it. Because I'm, I'm concerned about, just like my neighbors, I'm concerned about crime rate, which has increased. I'm, I'm concerned about our youth. And we can look on, we can turn on the television and look, where are our youth going? We can look at our schools, how schools now are failing. We need a foundation for our youth to come, to come to, what better place than church? What else do we have? To bring this church into our community, it, it wouldn't, it would not damage anything that they're speaking of. They're only speculating about traffic. Traffic is not bad in this area. They don't even have, the only ones that would be coming through our neighborhood is the ones in the neighborhood. 155, the, the, the land sits right there at 155. There should not be a problem. The only ones that drive, we drive through the neighborhood every day, going to and fro from jobs. I asked Mr. Holmes, just like you stood in the post office and asked me for my vote, look at it more than, more than what you're looking at it. I'm one that you asked to vote, and I stood behind you. I stood behind you. Now I'm asking you to stand behind me. I'm just asking that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Reverend Willie Coward. And I, I'm for the church as well. I've been knowing the Morrisons for about 10 years, a decade. And we've also visited their church. These are family-oriented people, and they love working with people. So I think the church would be a win-win situation. And I'd like to reiterate, I visit the property. I don't see any problems with the church being in that community because of the assets of 155. Now, speaking about traffic congestion, traffic is congested in a lot of areas up here. But can you do anything about it when people are steady moving in? Can you do anything about that? So, you know, in all reality, this church would be a great asset. I work in the school system. And I've seen how children have changed, how they're bringing guns into schoolhouses, how they're fighting at the drop of a pen. They're ready to fight. And these people are oriented to working with the youth and also families. This is, I, I ask you all to rethink the situation over because it's a win-win situation. Now, we let things like juke joints, strip clubs, and everything else come into our communities. But does it build, do those things build anybody up? It's, you know, you, you, you got to think about the decision that you're making because our children are going astray. Our families need to be brought together. Families are separated terribly. I never seen the likes of families, family members parted. And so this church will help connect family members together. It will help build better families for our communities. So I ask you to really give this some serious consideration. And they are good people. And, and I tell you, the church has been a great entity to the community already. So that's, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Susan Sylvester, and I live in South Bridge, Georgia. I attend Greater Vision Christian Ministry. And I want to say it's been a great asset in my life. I hear a lot of people opposing in the things that they are saying that a church does. Church does not break down a community. It actually builds it up. We've been told to go and purchase million-dollar buildings. Unfortunately, we're not that large where we can afford million-dollar buildings. If we could, we probably would, but we just can't. And this is the best way we know how to build a sanctuary, to build a community, to help the children who are the future of tomorrow. And I pray Commissioner Holmes that you will hear us tonight, and you will change your, your vote. I pray that your heart will be melted and you will hear us. We do not want to cause problems. We will not devalue anybody's property, but we will build it up and build the children of tomorrow up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Calling again?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sandra Simon. I live at 4420 River Vista Road. And I'm a member of Greater Vision Ministry. And I hear what the community have to say. But being a Christian, we all know that churches does not bring violence or anything to a community. Christians are here to build up, and that is what we do. Our church is a family church. We are not a large church. We need the property to help the community. We are here to say, come, we want to get involved. We are here to help families. We are here to help people who, you know, even the elderly. A church is a church. A church does not bring down a community, no way. And, you know, as we all say, we have to be mindful of, you know, children, mindful of families. That's what we are here for. And there are many people around that may not be in this place today, who would love a church to be near where they are. And we just pray that you will all consider, you know, what a church really is and what we are about. We are just people wanting to help, wanting to be a part of the community, and to help people to know God. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? We have a minute and 18 seconds remaining. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Last call. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Well, thank you. So we, oh, come on. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. And we have a minute and 13 seconds. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and all members of the Commission. I thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my church. I am a member of Greater Vision Christian Ministry. And one of the things that stand out to me of this church is the fact that they make an attempt to know your name, to know your family, to know where you're going. And that is a privilege that sometimes get lost in a larger church. So when you have a smaller church that's endeavoring to get into a community and know the community, you're not coming in where you're going to be hidden, where nobody knows what, knows your name and is interested in the, your family and what's going on. And this ministry is definitely family-centric, and it's definitely about building a community and strengthening the community. Thank you for your time.
All right, anyone else? We've got 23 seconds remaining. Okay. At this moment, this concludes our public hearing. And so we'll ask the applicant to come forward and, again, to be able to address any questions or comments from the board.
Madam Chair, we're at your pleasure.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Prince?
Okay. I'm just going to make one statement. And I guess being the son of a preacher, maybe my views are a little bit different. But church is the foundation of a strong community. And I'm just going to go with that statement and leave it at that.
All right. Commissioner Holmes, and we'll come to Commissioner Clements. Okay, Commissioner Clements?
I want to say that any decision that is made here tonight, I don't want the church to feel like this is a decision against the church. I want to make sure that our hearts and our minds are clear about our position as zoning and making sure that we address quality of life in communities. So I want to also say that I, you know, this is a residential area and that the church has purchased property in a residential area. Is that correct, Attorney? Okay. So when you purchased this, you knew that it was a residential area?
But Commissioner, they have followed the necessary procedures to get the conditional use approved.
And conditional use does not mean that it's automatically given.
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear. And I don't want people to think, a lot of times when people purchase property and they see conditional use, they think that it is permitted. And this is a lesson for everyone that's in here tonight. Just because it's conditional use doesn't mean that it is allowed to be there without a vote. So we have to make sure that we do our due diligence when we're purchasing properties to make sure that that's, that it's a use or it's a conditional use. So I just wanted to make sure that the church was aware that conditional use does not mean that you automatically get that.
That's, Commissioner, that's the legal standard. That's correct.
Thank you. I just want, I just want everybody in here to know what's legal. This is a sticky situation when you're talking about church and religion. We have to talk about what's legal, and as a board, we're required to do what's legal by law.
And then I have a question, Commissioner Holmes, unless you want to go now. My question is, how much outreach did you do to this community or with this community? Did you have community meetings with the, the residences? So is this a surprise or?
We tried to reach out to the community. And, you know, my attorneys, we all tried together so we could get a meeting and meet with everybody. Didn't happen.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Holmes?
This is, this is a hard decision. And being in this position is never easy. However, I respect and I believe everything that you do as a church. I believe that you're there for the children. I believe that you're there for the community. I also believe that this is the wrong location. And then I have, but I, and I have to respect the residents in the area. The residents in the area don't want a church in the middle of their community. I want to be there for you. I want to be there to support you. I want to work with you. But this particular area is not conducive for what, you know, for what you're trying to do. The community, they don't want the church there. And as an elected representative, I have to respect what they want in their community.
Commissioner, we should have been told that. When we, before we purchased the property, we had a scheduled pre-application meeting. And we were not told that we could not build a church within the community. As far as we know, that we were told we need a conditional use permit in order for us to build a church. No one told us that, being in a community. Well, where do you want us to go? Is there, is there a commercial area? Is that zoning for a church? And if we were told this, we wouldn't go ahead and purchase the property. The reason why we purchased the property is because we were told we need a conditional use permit. So in that case, I, I think everything should change when it comes to zoning and so that everyone will get an understanding. It's not that we want to go into a community and to cause trouble or problem. That's not what a church is for. A church is to help the community. And so if we were told this, we wouldn't have purchased it. Perhaps we need to just go into a commercial area. If we were told that, then we would have done that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Given the fact that that this is a commercial area and there are a number of homes located very close to this proposed church, given the fact that I've heard from many, many citizens on the impact it will have on their quality of life, given the fact that we have citizens here tonight that have stood up and complained about not wanting to have this facility in this particular location of my district, I'm going to move that this motion is denied.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Is there any further questions or comments from the board? All in favor to deny? Any opposed? Thank you. The appeal was denied. Thank you. As we move through, as noted previously, the public hearing for the, in District Two regarding the property to change the future land use map from low density to resident, to high density at Jonesboro Road and McCullough has been postponed. Also, public hearing RZ 1715, which is also property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road, west of McCullough Road, has been postponed. Public hearing COMP AM 1709 regarding the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road, west of McCullough Road, has been rescheduled. Public hearing RZ 1716 with the Georgia Reserve regarding the property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road of McCullough Road has been postponed. And we'll now move into public hearing ULDC AM 1808. And we'll ask Stacy Jordan-Rutacell to present this amendment to Chapter Four of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code.
Good evening, Chairwood Commissioners. The request before you tonight is being brought by staff regarding event centers. And we'll note that last spring, an ordinance came, and we modified the ordinance regarding special event permits for event centers. And the purpose of this ordinance amendment is to further revise, thank you Dante, is to further revise the, the ordinance regarding event centers and to set out development standards, including allowing event centers with over 10 acres to have unlimited events through the year. These development standards also include minimum lot width and also minimum setbacks. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Question, Commissioner Clements?
Thank you, Stacy and staff for this. And I just want to say that you keep talking about event center And I just want to say that you keep talking about event centers in residential areas. It's not happening. Also, you didn't state that it also said lodges and event facilities. So that means that those Airbnb's parties that's happening all night long, they can't come to Henry County. So this would allow that as well, correct?
The ordinance already regulates lodges and event facilities together and this ordinance would actually separate the two with different development standards.
So that would mean that a house that's on three acres of land, if somebody wanted to use your home as a commercial property in a residential area, would be allowed to use your home on three acres of land for Airbnb as this states for weddings, parties, whatever they wanted to have. Would that be correct?
The lodges would be different. This would be for civic minded groups and so forth, but the ordinance today allows that. The ordinance amendment that we're proposing is only for the event facilities. Will be including higher standards for them regarding the, the minimum lot area, the minimum lot width, the minimum setbacks and so forth like that, as well as in a clarification to the noise ordinance.
In residential areas?
This is for RA, residential agricultural. That's correct.
Is there a reason?
This is something that we felt was appropriate for lots that were much larger than what we could have under the, the existing ordinance. So 10 acres has the space for adequate parking, adequate buffers and so forth.
Okay. My question, so the current ordinance says, how many events can you have and you're proposing unlimited, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Right. So last spring, the ordinance was changed regarding special event permits for locations in the RA zoning district with an approved conditional use. And you're limited to five events per year and no more than one event per month. What this ordinance is proposing is that for the event facilities on 10 acres or more with an approved conditional use, which means it would come before the county on a case-by-case basis, to ask for a conditional use, which is not guaranteed, but if it is, it would allow for unlimited events.
That would be unlimited traffic, unlimited loud music, everything would be unlimited for that particular area. So the neighbors will still have issues with all the traffic driving up to 10 acres, correct?
The number of events would be unlimited, but what this ordinance does is to revise our noise ordinance. So it specifies that if this is a weekend event, the noise has to stop after 11:00. If this is a weekday event, the noise has to stop after 10:00. And if you're going to have an outdoor event, it has to begin by 8:00 PM so that you don't have that excuse that we started late. So this ordinance revises what we currently have.
So I, so I would have to listen to all that noise until 10:00, 11:00 at night every day?
The ordinance would allow for, for, for noise that is not a violation. You, you may not be a nuisance to your neighbors and...
It is a nuisance. I mean, it is a nuisance if, if the neighbors have to, if the neighbors have to call and report situations on a regular basis.
And if there is a violation, because these event facilities may not be a nuisance, it specifies that the police department will handle those events, those violations that happen after business hours. But if this is during business hours, that the code enforcement will handle it. So we want to address that in this proposed amendment.
So we're gonna waste resources as well on something that we can prevent?
It's not a waste of resources. These event facilities in no case can be a violation or a nuisance to their neighbors.
Have you, have you compared this to other metro area counties?
I'm not familiar with that. I, I don't know that at this time.
So basically, we don't know if we're gonna be an outlier with this type of ordinance?
I don't know that at this time.
Mr. Holmes, if you asked why this was brought back to the board, and I know that was probably more of a rhetorical question, but if you will recall, several months ago when this board was dealing with that Rocky Creek Road Event Center, the board's directive at the time was to have staff bring, well, this is, this would apply to, actually, that Rocky Creek facility was less than 10 acres, I believe, was it not? But, but at the time, the, the board's direction was to have staff look at a different set of rules depending on the acreage, and I think that's why this ordinance is in front of you today. And that's not to influence, you, you didn't indicate you would approve it, but you did ask, ask staff to create something for the board to consider, and I think that's why this was...
Commissioner Clements, and I think we'll go to Commissioner Prince afterwards.
First of all, I want to thank staff, and I know this is a hot seat for you guys to be in. And if the board asks for you guys to bring it back, then I guess that's exactly what you're doing. But I don't think they, I don't, I don't know who asked for that, but I don't want to see it brought back to add it in a residential community. To have policies and things in place and to allow them to have multiple events is not an issue, but having it in a residential area is an issue for me. And it says, Commission District to be countywide. If whoever wanted this brought back and wanted to address it in a residential area, they have that right, but I would like for District Two to be taken out of it.
Because it's the ordinance that governs the land uses across the unincorporated portions of Henry County.
Well, then I would like for this to be tabled until we can get more residents here to say whether they want to have three acres or 10 acres or whatever. And lodges are included in this, but I mean, we don't want to start putting commercial properties in residential areas. We already have to deal with houses coming in, with comprehensive land changing and going from agricultural land to high density and medium density. We don't want commercial properties in residential areas. And I, and I'm speaking for my district when I say we. So I, I'd rather have more of my constituents here to be able to be, participate in the public forum about this if we're gonna vote on it.
Okay. Commissioner Prince?
Let's talk about this a minute. Seem to be misunderstanding some things. In my district, I have event centers and, and they're on hundreds of acres. They don't have neighbors and they're residential. They are agritourism. Agritourism is a pretty big business. I do agree that we don't need this in a subdivision, but I have areas, and this is why I did not vote for it the first time, I have areas in my, my district that are farms that have barns that are thousands of feet away from any other structures, that they make a living by having weddings and things of that nature, and they are well suited for them. And so what we're doing is we're comparing a lot in subdivision, as we had before with the three acres, to a large piece. And agritourism has to be on an RA piece. And in fact, I believe Nash Farms, if we were to look at the, the zoning of Nash Farms, it is RA. And you have events there all the time, which falls under the same exact category of events.
So why don't we stick with what we have in place for the county? The county's on 204 acres. So if it's on 204 acres, I can support it, but I can't support 10 acres and then you put a commercial property for profit on 10 acres. And then it says for lodges, in this plan that you have before, it says lodges can be three acres. So explain to me if, if that's not what you mean by this, because I'm concerned about the Airbnbs. It says minimum site area for lodges is three acres, and I guess that's already in our plan, but based on what we changed it to, they can only have one event per month and they're limited to five. If we change this and if someone has a, a three acre home, they can put it on Airbnb, they have unlimited people, unlimited days that they can rent, party, whatever. I live in a, a community that every house is on an acre or more. We don't want a three acre person who goes and buys three lots to be able to put an Airbnb in the community.
If I can...
Commissioner Prince? And then we'll look to see if there are other comments, okay?
I still have the floor. We can simply turn down the CUP when they come up, meaning when it comes to the board, just like we just did on that church, if we don't want it there, if it's on three acres and we don't want it there, we can turn it down. But right now, you are taking viable agritourism businesses in my district and shutting them down.
Uh-oh, okay. Are you finished, Commissioner Prince?
And this is a problem. Again, we have every one of these with the CUP, we will have the right to turn them down. Meaning, if they come to us, they're on 10 acres and they want to put up a lodging and we don't want them to do it, we have the right to turn them down. But there's no way for them to come to us if we don't put it on you in the ULDC. We still have the option to do so.
All right. Commissioner Clements, and we'll go to Commissioner Wilson. Did you have a comment? Okay. So Commissioner Clements and Commissioner Wilson.
This doesn't limit what we already have, so we already have these in place. They already can have five acre, uh, five events per year and they can have one per month. This is to change it from unlimited. Is that correct?
No, you were talking about the special event permit.
Process. That's a whole different section in our ULDC. This is specifically for event facilities. Regarding lodges, what you see now...
So let's, let's talk about event facilities. Right now, event facilities are permitted. And right now, they are permitted with five per year. Is that correct?
No. Event facilities on RA properties can be permitted with a conditional use and a special event permit approval. They're limited to five with one per month.
And this will change it to unlimited?
On those who meet the criteria. We, we, the criteria have been enhanced for event facilities on those properties that are 10 acres or more. Now, as, as it pertains to the lodges, that is as it is. The lodges, the, the criteria that's listed here, that's how it's been since this code was adopted. So that carried over to this. The only thing that's different is event facilities. We've separated them and added more teeth, per se, to the event facilities.
So that they enhance their number of, what does this do for the event facilities? They give them more opportunity to have more, correct?
Those event facilities that are less than 10 acres are still limited to those five per the process.
But we're talking about the 10 acre ones.
And those who will meet, who meet the criteria for 10 acres, the 400 foot lot width, the 100 feet of buffer and, and setback from all property lines, they are permitted to have those events with no limitation.
And so, and I have, and thank you, but I have an issue with that because we're talking about Rocky Creek who has three acres or an event that's in District Four who has 10 acres. Well, the person who has 10 acres may have friends in this county that can persuade votes on this board. Person who has three acres or live in that community that's a little smaller may not. So we can't just put something out there and say, well, it's up to the commission at that time to decide, because things are politically driven. As a board, we have to make laws now that protects everybody, whether they're the have or the have not. So whether it's three acres or 10 acres, unlimited, five, I just think that commercial properties do not belong in residential areas. Those that are already there, then change the language to say, if you already there and you already have that, fine. But we're talking about new people coming into our community, buying 10 acres because they can afford to have 10 acres, and then they put an event facility. I just say that we shouldn't make this where people who already, if they already have it, then fine. But new people coming in should not be allowed to come into a neighborhood and buy up 10 acres of land and drop a commercial property into a residential area. So I would like to see how can we protect our citizens from that? And I don't think that this protects them from that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, and then we'll go to Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Cliss, she covered most of it, but there's two things in the language that I'm not really happy with, is 10 acres and unlimited. 10 acres, I believe, is way too small to even consider something like this, and unlimited gives people way too much control of the, of the, of the community of disturbance and that type of thing. So I'm not, I'm not happy with the 10 acres and unlimited.
Okay. Commissioner Holmes?
I'm concerned about the precedent that this may set. You know, maybe somebody wants to start a alcohol treatment center in a residential community. Maybe somebody wants to, you know, start a drug treatment center. I mean, what kind of precedent would this kind of ordinance set for other businesses that may feel that they have the right to operate in a residential community as well?
All right. Commissioner Varne?
Stacy, take me through, how did we come up with 10 acres?
What we feel is that 10 acres is required to have the minimum lot width, is 10 acres is required to have the, the minimum setback, the 10 acres is required to have the adequate parking, 10 acres is required to, to adequately buffer from the neighbors. And so staff feels like 10 acres is good and appropriate to, to have for a, a different standard than a typical event facility, which would be limited to five per year and one per month.
And then I'll just state my concern, and I understand the conditional use and that it would come before the board, but that unlimited, in my opinion, still reigns. And I just feels like, obviously, we need to have more discussion, in my opinion, about if we're gonna do anything, but I'm thinking about the comprehensive land use plan and how we are really trying to manage the growth that is here and where it's going, and how do we protect especially those low density, the agricultural areas, all of those areas, and how do we, again, to protect that areas that we can, but at the same time, manage the growth that is coming? So those are the concerns that I have. In addition, and I don't know even if this is something you just revisit, especially as we go through the comprehensive land use plan, but again, you know, it's just a concern that I have. The unlimited in my mind sticks out. So Commissioner Prince?
Again, agritourism, for the love of Pete. What is the name of that facility? I can't think of it. Somebody remind me. The one, the one on Turner Church.
Turner Church.
Oh, that's, Southern Bell. Southern Bell Farms. Does that have, that's, that's agricultural, right?
Yes, it's agritourism.
And that, that's a CUP on that?
No, they are agritourism via the state and they predate all of this.
They predate all of this?
Yes.
So I, I want everybody to understand, that is not a commercial area. They have events there. That is the type of events that we're talking about here. Now, we talk about if somebody has a friend on the board, they can pay them or do whatever to get something passed. We vote on zonings every day. We, well, in the night meetings. You can have a church on two acres. They applied for a CUP, we turned them down. If someone applies, we can just turn them down, just like every other zoning. But if we don't do this, agritourism in my area dies, goes away.
Well, we've had some good discussion, in my opinion. So apparently we have some, are there, is there anything differently that we need to say?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, good.
This doesn't, the ones that are already there, let's use Southern Bell for an example. Does this mean that Southern Bell can't have, if we don't pass this, does this mean they can't have events at Southern Bell Farm?
No, they're vested.
I want to be very clear. I want to be very clear. Thank you so much. This does not prohibit those that are already out there that have those agritourism events for us to do this, but it does set a precedence for people coming into our community now. So I just want to be clear and make sure that this is not anything against Southern Bell.
Okay. Anything new information, new comments that we need to discuss at this moment? This is a, a public hearing. So at this time, we'll allow those who wants to speak in opposition to this ordinance to please come forward. We'll have a total of 10 minutes for the group that will come and speak in opposition, and then we'll allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak in favor. So at this time, if there are any public comments regarding those who wishes to speak in opposition, would you please come forward now? You may come and state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jean Cessinger. I live at 323 Rocky Creek Road.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
My name's Jean Cessinger. I live at 323 Rocky Creek Road. There's that name. Let me see if I can get this underneath properly to where you can see it. That little red triangular piece of property, that's where I live. It's 4.91 acres. Okay? It's 4.91 acres. That's where I live. Right here is 3.41 or 4.7 acres, and that was an event facility. As this new stuff is being worded, you have to look at the maximum number of people that would be allowable. And in the way I'm reading it, that on three acres, if you have a conditional use permit and a business license and all those nice little things that you're supposed to have in place, you could have up to 10,000 people. Over 10,000, you go to a different type of a situation. Is that not correct?
Okay. You're just keeping, we'll, we'll make the court.
Okay. 10,000 people in that little area, it's, you can't do it. The infrastructure's not there. It's a residential area and it's a commercial business. It does not belong in a residential area. Now, I'm making note of acreage surrounding all around. You can put an air horn off in the middle of the moor, 141.13 acres, and you, those people over here on Rocky Creek Road can hear that air horn. We've been fighting the noise pollution from the special events. We're still fighting it, but it doesn't matter anymore because this board ruled on that on August 15th. So we have to eat what's left until December of this year. We still have the strangers and the falling down drunks from the wedding parties. We still have all of that. So when this commission decides to give unlimited commercial business in a residential area, they really need to think about it because they are hampering, they are imposing an unjust thing on every residential area. I heard somebody up here... I heard somebody up here say not in subdivisions. No, no. If you're going to protect subdivisions, you need to be protecting the rural agricultural areas, too. We are people, and we, we are standing up here saying, "Don't do this to us." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we, we'll let the public comment, and we'll make our notes, please. Thank you.
I'm Karen Austin, and I live on Rocky Creek Road, and I live with this on a regular basis. I'm also a registered nurse for forty years. I also do home care and hospice. And you now want to, with these kind of frickin' facilities, put them in a residential area, and I can promise you, y'all as individuals probably don't realize how many people in these residential areas have major health issues. And you wanna have unlimited of what I put up with? And you, Mr. Prince, helped act, do this. It damages the overall individual's residence, their health and well-being. It damaged mine when you allowed Cotton Creek Estates to now go for another year. I have a chronic health condition that every time they have one, it exacerbates, but you are accountable for it. And I write your name down every time, and the other three of you that voted for it. It is not fair to the other residents of this county that have major health issues to have unlimited noise craziness going on in your neighborhood, crossing your property lines, driving every which way on the roads. You're causing a, a major issue for all of these residents that a lot of them have no control. I work with the elderly. They can't get out here and tell you they don't want it, but they can tell me when I'm in their homes, and I know what's going on, and I'm bringing it on their behalf today. No, we don't want this in our county. We don't want this anywhere. Now, if you wanna keep a little, uh, southern, whatever it is, that's fine. I take my grandson there sometimes, and that's fine. But I don't want it in a ten-acre lot? That's a laugh. You put that up on the property line, and that noise is rambunctious, oh, it's awful. I can feel the noise in my house from Cotton Creek Estates, and if you have a migraine headache and you try and lay your head down on the pillow and you hear the vibrations, come join me one day. I'll help you have a migraine. Let you understand and feel the pain and discomfort it causes to have one of these facilities in a residential area. It's unacceptable.
If you can look at the board, please, thank you.
It's unacceptable. Totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Frank Austin. I also live on Rocky Creek Road. Uh, but I'm more concerned with the county as a whole tonight. Uh, we hopefully have gotten the Rocky Creek situation taken care of. Uh, my concern is for the county. Okay, Mr. Prince wants these big farms to have their event centers? I don't have a problem with an event center located on a piece of property, large enough, with enough buffer, enough road and, to accommodate the people coming into it, to accommodate the noise. That's not where the problem lies. Those two-hundred-acre farms out there, three-hundred-acre farms, they've got room and enough buffer to handle this type of situation. We're looking at a ten-acre piece of property, that's, uh, only a couple of more acres than what I've got out there. I couldn't put it on my property and expect it to not disturb the neighborhood. We're talking about not destroying the integrity of the rural agr- rural residential atmosphere and lifestyle in Henry County. To do it on ten acres? That's ridiculous. Ten acres is just way out of reason. If we're gonna do this, especially with unlimited, we need to bump that acreage up to the two-hundred acre, three-hundred-acre farms. Uh, we're not about destroying their, their plight because I know what it is. Uh, but we're against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Swenson. These are all my, my friends here. I don't live in that area, but they're all my friends, and they are all seriously concerned. Uh, Mr. Prince, you've already heard from Dante that, uh, this, should this fail, which we really hope it does, uh, it doesn't affect you in the big farms. It doesn't affect you at all. Everything that has been will continue to be. But this is a very special situation, and Ms. Wood, since the mention has come up, and you know that this is all about Rocky Creek, I would expect that since that situation was held, was, was, was being handled by Mr. Welch, that you would, uh, now recuse yourself from any vote in this because it does, in fact, involve Rocky Creek, okay? This is a very important issue. This is a very important for these people, it's very important for the people of Henry County. We've got all kinds of facilities in all of these wonderful clubhouses across the, across the county that are specifically designed to handle this stuff, and we are giving them a tax break of only charging them nothing in tax for their property. Excuse me, they, they're appraised at a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. All of these facilities, and yet, they don't come up. We've got Nash Farms, we've got, we've got a beautiful place up there that is a, um, hm, 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 well, it's a bit of a water trap, but other than that, it's a great facility up there at Village Park. We've got all kinds of facilities. We don't need to bring ten acres or less into the fold? Forget that. This is ridiculous. It's ludicrous. What we have right now is sufficient. Have you been able to, uh, get along with the, the way it is right now, Mr. Prince? Have you been able to get along? Just nod your head, you know? Of course. So, that's what I'm talking about. Leave this alone, forget it, because you're going to be affecting people in a very, very bad way. And please recuse yourself, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. And we have-
I'm Larry Maury, and I have a school out that way. And, uh, really, the thing that most amazes me is that we can just change the rules as we go along. If something don't agree with you, we just change the rule and bring it up another way in a different perspective.
Please address the board, sir.
And we just do it, "Can I look around, ma'am? Is it somebody I can't look at? Is there a problem with that?" Us, us get, us get real, okay? You know, it really, it really bothers me that y'all can just-
Thank you, time is up now for the ten-minute comments of those that are in opposition. Thank you. Um, is there anyone else who's wishing? If you stand as a group of anyone in opposition, because we've run out of the ten minutes, just stand now, and that'll give us the voice for those that want to oppose.
I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, we will now, uh, move into those. You're out of order, Mr. Maury, you're out of order, so please be seated, and we thank you for your comments. We'll now move to anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request.
I don't think they heard you on the opposition.
I'm sorry?
I don't think they heard you. Anybody in this audience that opposes this to stand?
Yeah, if, if you didn't get a chance to speak, I was just trying to give those a chance to stand if you did not have a chance to speak, if you were in opposition.
So, everyone that's sitting in the audience that would not want this should be standing at this time.
I got it, Commissioner Clarence. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So, we will now grant anyone in favor, um, of this zoning to please come now, and the group, again, there will be a total of ten minutes allocated for this time to speak. Call in again, anyone else wishing to, or anyone wishing to speak in favor of this planning and zoning item, please come forward. Okay, well, this does end our, um, public hearing aspect of it, and now, we'll just open the floor for any questions or comments from the board. Commissioner Prince?
Stacy, I, I, I take no issue with making the acreage bigger, and I, I'd like to point out something. Bud Kelly Park is a hundred and twenty-one acres. It is basically an event center. We have unlimited events there, you can rent a, um, canopy and have your events there. It's the same thing, and I mean, it, it is kinda funny that the county can do it, and then people don't want other people to do it. And I understand completely. But, again, if we could up the acreage, that would be fine with me. Um, and I'm not trying to sneak you in some ten-acre thing, I, I, I think that's a bit small, too. But I think one time Dante and I may have talked about fifty acres or something of that nature, north of that, you know, an, an area that fits it. But again, you know, the, the, you, you start talking about event centers, you, you, horse riding events, I mean, there's all kind of events that don't go around people drinking, and, uh, it's just a, it's a good thing for country area that I live in, and it may not be good in other districts, but for us, it, it works out pretty well, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Holmes?
There was a young lady that stood up, and, and she pointed out where she lived, and, uh, pointed to the adjacent properties, and she talked about, um, he's still hearing noise, even though it was over ten acres away. Um, every single year, there is a huge festival called the Imagine Festival at the Atlanta Motor Speedway, and the music is so loud at that festival, we get calls and complaints all the way from Fayette County. So, that is my fear in this particular situation, because, as I said, um, you know, when we, when we were discussing the church, um, people have a right to privacy, and they have a right to quality of life on property that they own, and, and just because you have ten acres, you shouldn't ha- have the ability to disrespect anybody else's rights. So, that's where I am with it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? And there was a question from one of the citizens. Um, Stacy, I don't know if you were able to capture that question from the citizen, and if you would respond to it if you did.
Sure, Chair Wood. Uh, the question was regarding ten thousand people who may attend events. This ordinance does not mention the number of people. That really should be handled by the, the fire marshal. Uh, what the applicant or the, the citizen may be referring to is a, a code that's, that's been in the county code for a while, but is not in the ULDC that mentions events of over ten thousand people, but that, that is not this.
Okay. All right. County.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, the county does have, uh, large parcels of property that we do have events, and Nash Farm keeps coming up. Um, but the thing is, is that people know where a park is, and they know if they build around a park, and that's a quality of life for everybody to come and enjoy. We're talking about private parties. We're not talking about open quality, uh, quality of life that's inclusive to all of the neighbors and everybody can come over. We're talking about facilities in a residential area for profit. And so, I just wanna be very clear that that's not what we're talking about. So, the ten acres I do have an issue with. Also, having a huge issue with unlimited, with the number unlimited. Um, so, I just wanted to put that out.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Barm, and then welcome to your county manager.
I, too, um, have issues with the ten acres, and, uh, and, uh, I, I would consider something maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty on a, a large acre tract, and, uh, having made sure we got those established buffers around these properties to protect, uh, anybody else. But, um, uh, I certainly have an issue with the ten acres.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, county manager?
Um, Chair and Commissioners, and certainly, we, we certainly want to receive the comments that are coming in as it pertains to this ordinance, and that's truly the purpose of having a public hearing, to hear from you all. Um, but I wanna remind the board that staff is bringing this as a result of comments that we received from, um, a previous case, and that's why we're bringing it tonight. We don't want anyone to think that we're just throwing it on the agenda, um, or there's a hidden agenda, because it's certainly not that. I can assure you that our planning staff has many more other things on their plate that they need to be working on, but I think one of the takeaways from this ordinance, once we move beyond what the right number should be in terms of acreage, is that we need to get better control over our event facilities, period. Right now, we have no regulations for event facilities. If someone wants to operate an event facility, we can call PD out, they can go out, tell them, "Hey, it's too loud," but we need to have regulations in place that regulate the hours that they can have events. Um, so, this is one of those measures for us to do that. So, I would certainly, again, ask you all to tell us what you want. If you don't like the ten acres, I think we're very clear on that. If it needs to be a hundred acres, we'll look at that, we'll look at surrounding jurisdictions. But I do think for us, we need to put something in place in terms of how we regulate event facilities, beyond the acreage, beyond the unlimited, and, and I think we're clear. Uh, what staff will do is bring back a resolution to you all, and we'll remove the unlimited recommendation. But again, we need to hear from you all, and this is the only format or forum that we have to get that information so that we can build what you all are looking for. Again, we need to hear from the public, and what it sounds like we may need to do, um, before we bring it back to the board, is one, have a workshop with you, but two, publicize it and open it up to the public so that we can hear from them, and I think we're committed to that. But I didn't want you all to, um, feel like Stacy just threw something out here, because he certainly was trying to bring back what he thought and what planning staff, and I don't wanna say he, what we thought, um, would be a good first step. So, again, we welcome the comments that we received tonight. Um, I think this is a good stepping stone for us, and we're amenable to doing what fits for the entire county. So, I just wanted to put that out there, and certainly will answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Yep, one more.
Yes.
I don't think that we need to, um, and this is just me, to look at how to bring this back to get it passed. I think we need to probably look at a moratorium of no more event centers until we utilize the ones that we have. What I would like to see is, how many do we already have in the county? Where are they located in the county? How much use are they getting in the county? Are we getting the best use out of them? Because the, the county has a lot of parks and wrecks, and if we don't allow any more moratoriums, we could collect their money instead of raising taxes and have people to use our parks and wrecks and our facilities. So, I don't wanna necessarily see bringing more in, but I would like to see, um, you know, I, there's some facts and data that I would need to see before you bring it back for more event facilities. If, if event facilities are already there, maybe putting some stipulations on what we have in place, but not new ones, not new ones.
Okay, well, any other questions or comments from the board, because we do need to, uh, give some guidance here for a motion, through a motion. Okay, so, uh, no other comments or questions? The floor is now open for a motion. Again, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, no motion. Um, county attorney? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Okay, um, as noted previously, the, um, Public Hearing Planning and Zoning Item MC MDP one-seven-oh-four, which is regarding the modification to the Master Development Plan for the property at Eagles Brook Country Club, um, has been postponed. Also, the MC seventeen-oh-five regarding the property located within the North Quadrant section of Jonesboro Road and Chambers Road has been postponed. And we'll now move into item MC seventeen-zero-six regarding the Clayton Community Church of Stockbridge requesting a modification to zoning conditions, and we'll ask Mr. Jordan Rudesell to make that presentation.
Chair?
Yes.
Um, Stacy, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. As everyone can clearly see, the flat and other work was done by my firm, and it bears my signature, so at this time, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is located on Mount Olive, just across from the location of the, um, uh, Clayton Community Facility Church off of Jodico Road. Um, this is the area with the athletic fields. This is the survey, and it shows an athletic field here. It shows neighboring properties, it shows a detention facility. Uh, this is the entrance to the facility off of Mount Olive Road here, and the church proper is to the, um, to the northwest. Illustrated before you is the conceptual preliminary site plan that would show additional development on this subject property. So, you'll notice, uh, typical basketball, uh, tennis courts and so forth, um, as well as neighboring properties. This conditional use for this subject property was approved in two thousand eight, and at the time, the representative for the church had appealed the denial of this conditional use permit to the Board of Commissioners, and they had stated in the minutes that there was no request- was no request for recreational lighting, there was no request for loudspeakers or PA system, there was no request for additional structures or buildings, they said in the minutes that they just wanted the athletic fields. And to that regard, the board at the time approved it with thirteen conditions, and three of the conditions held the applicant to their request, namely, number two, that exterior lighting's prohibited, number three, that any new buildings or additions must be architecturally compatible with the existing structures in the surrounding area, and finally, number thirteen, that there be no loudspeakers or PA system on the subject property. But, we did receive a request to modify these conditions, and so we're bringing it back before you for your consideration. It's typical for a high school to have evening games, and this is something in the letter of intent that the applicant has expressed, that they would like to do at this point, and to do that and to be safe, they'll need lighting, of course, they'll need to be a loudspeaker or a PA system, and there would need to be buildings and structures for restroom facilities, press box, and so forth. So, we do have concerns as staff regarding the, the proximity of the neighboring residential properties, and so, uh, we're, we're bringing it to you with no recommendation, but with, with, with some concerns, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Okay, is the applicant here as well? Are there any, if you state your name and address, please, and any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, my name is, good evening, my name is Fred Banky, I'm the headmaster of Community Christian School. It is a ministry of community Bible church. Now, the legal name of Community Bible Church is Clayton Community Church. Clayton Community Church found, was founded more than fifty years ago in Clayton County. Uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our request to the Commissioners this evening. Our school has been on the Jodaco, uh, two thousand one Jodaco Road for the past twenty-one years. Our church has been there for twenty-six years, so we're well-established in Clayton, in Henry County. Our school has about eight hundred students, from young preschoolers all the way through high school seniors, our church has over five thousand members. The school is a Christ-centered college preparatory school. We send our graduates to colleges all over Georgia, and in fact, all over the country. Our mission is threefold, introducing students to Christ, partnering with parents and developing Christian character in students' lives, and preparing our students to be godly leaders who will make a difference for Christ. We teach our students the importance of serving others, reaching out, helping those who have a need. In fact, last year, our high school students performed a documented seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy community service hours. That's for ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade. So, we do a significant amount of, of community service. Our students supported eighteen different missions and ministries, some in Henry County, some across the state of Georgia, and others nationally and internationally. Our students themselves raised almost twenty thousand dollars to support missions such as Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, Noah's Ark Children's Home in Henry County, Ho- House of Hope in Guatemala, Hour of Grace in Jamaica, Helping in His Name, the Food Pantry in Stockbridge, Samaritan's Purse International, Pregnancy Resource Center in McDonough, Gigi's House in Mor- in Morrow, Compassion International, and on and on, along with donating all types of goods, canned foods, diapers, winter wear, toiletries, school supplies, and more to these missions. Last year, twenty-nine of our high school students and faculty went on overseas mission trips. They helped paint an addition for the Jamaica School for the Deaf. They taught English lessons at, at a public school and served the homeless in Budapest, Hungary. They helped build and paint an addition, and they served the community of Martha Ray, Guatemala. Fifty-five of our middle school students went on a local mission trip to Grace Farm, Georgia, assisting in the building of concrete footings for cabins, helping in the construction of flower beds, and doing finishing work on the cabins. Our church, along with students and families from the school, collected and sent two tractor-trailer loads full of, of bottled water to all those suffering from last year's hurricanes in Houston and in Florida. There's no question that our students are having an impact on their world for Christ. Our students excel academically. Last year, our fifty-one graduates earned more than five point five million dollars in college scholarship offers. The academic courses are rigorous, and it helps them prepare to be ready as leaders for whatever field they go into. The majority of our seniors will be awarded the Hope Scholarship, and a number will earn the Zell Miller Scholarship, along with other numerous academic awards. Two weeks ago, nine of our student athletes signed college athletic scholarships, and we anticipate there will be several more coming up from spring sports. We strive to teach our students to serve their community, as we prepare our students to be leaders of the next generation with a Christian perspective. We want, we want to further impact our students, our current ones, and future students, and to expand their service to the local community, but we are facing some limitations. We need your assistance to broaden our impact on our students, and their impact on Henry County and their world. We're in the process of building athletic fields for our school. Currently, for outdoor sports, we have to rent athletic fields. These fields are costly, and they're not always available when we need them. But we're nearly ready to open the soccer fields for afternoon games, but sports under the lights have not been approved yet. The conditions we're requesting to modify are the use of athletic lights and a PA system for our evening soccer games. We also seek permission to utilize alternative-style athletic structures for a concession stand, press box, storage, and such. I've submitted an example of what Life University uses for their facilities. This would help us modernize our future athletic buildings at a fraction of the cost of brick buildings. But concerning the lighting, this is specifically downcast directional lighting. It casts lights directly down, focusing on the game field, without dispersing light all over. And a standard PA system would be needed for, uh, the, the game announcements. These modifications would bring CCS in line with other competitive high schools by providing evening athletic activities. Friday night football and evening soccer games, just like advanced placement classes, just like the school play, like having a school band, like graduation, prom, all those, they're part of the high school experience. We're requesting the opportunity to play evening soccer and football on our property, just like the other schools in Henry County do. This would broaden the high school experience for our students, would help us further attract students and families to our schools. I ask for your help in reaching out, reaching our students by allowing us, Community Christian School and Community Bible Church, the op- the opportunity to offer a complete high school experience. This allows us greater opportunities of partnering with parents in impacting those students' lives. I know we have a number of individuals in attendance tonight who are in support of these modifications, and I realize we have limited time tonight while I'm making this request. So, I ask those in attendance who are in favor of these modifications to stand to please show a sign of support.
Yeah, if, if, we'll, we'll have a public hearing, so in a few moments, so we want to, at least, we'll go through that part in just a moment. Okay, thank you.
I, I have asked another, our current, a current parent and chairman of our governing board, Mr. Mario Arnold, if he could say a few words. Is this the right time for it?
Well, um, um, yeah.
Why don't you go with the public here?
Okay.
And, and let him do that, then.
Okay, very good, and thank you. But it was for the presentation aspect of it, and so we'll move into the public hearing aspect, and again, we'll give a total of ten minutes to those who, again, are in opposition of this to come as a group, um, and then those to speak in favor. But before you sit down, we just want, are there any questions or comments before the board, before we be entering to the public hearing section? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, you had a question?
Miss Kay, thank you for coming out tonight. Would you say, um, the church has been there for twenty-seven years?
Twenty-six years at the current location.
Right, twenty-six years, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we will move now into our public hearing section, and then for anyone who's wishing to speak in opposition, um, would you please come forward? The group will have a total of ten minutes to speak, so at this time, if you're wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Okay, now, for those who wishing to speak in favor of it, we have a total of ten minutes for the whole group to speak, so we do welcome those that were invited before, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Mario Arnold, and, um, I am a parent, uh, I've had two children, uh, attended Community Christian School, one that is, has since graduated as a sophomore at Reinhardt University, and we have a son that is a senior. Um, been around the school, my son, our son started, uh, community when he was in third grade, uh, the process of the field started when he was in third grade, he is now a senior. Um, and, he never got to play on those fields, he plays soccer, and he does play football, so he's not gonna, uh, be able to at least play football on those fields, but, uh, hopefully soccer here in the next month. Um, but these fields, they've gone from a dream to, to really a reality, when you look over there now and see the progress has been made over the last several years, the hard work that's been put in, um, it's just, it, it's time. Um, just to give you an idea, it's just imperative these kids have an opportunity to play sports on their own field, like every other school around the county and surrounding counties. Um, I played hot, football in high school, I don't know if any of you guys played, or cheered, or whatever, uh, but we've never actually, actually had a homecoming game on our own campus. We've had home games at Henry County High School, we've played at Banks Road, which is a wrecked field that seats about a hundred people, we outgrew that in about two years. Um, and so, uh, these kids deserve to have a true homecoming, to walk out the door, walk across the street, have home games, uh, on the property. Uh, we load up on Friday afternoons for, for what is a home game, uh, and drive about fifteen miles over to Henry County School, loading up trailers and all the equipment, uh, when it would be much easier, um, to do that just across the street. Uh, but we've had to do what we've had to do in order to make this work. Um, we're bussing kids every afternoon, uh, when you got elementary football teams, middle school football teams, uh, soccer, uh, every sport, we're having to put them on a bus to get them to facilities, to get them to practice, uh, we practice over, we play games, and we practice over here across the street at Red Hawk for baseball, uh, so there's a lot of work involved just trying to make this work. Um, there's a lot of lost time, uh, we've got, uh, we've got pastors in the past that, that give devotion to our kids, uh, at practice, we lose a lot of that time because of, of transporting them from here to there, just, just to practice, uh, and we'd be able to get a lot more done if we were just, uh, across the street and able to do that, um, not to mention the parents. Uh, we all know, uh, if we're parents, that, uh, the most critical part of a day for a kid, once he leaves school, is that time, once he gets home, he or she gets home until their parents get home. Um, and so, the time wasted, uh, finishing up practice, putting them back on the bus, bringing them back to school for the parents to pick them up, um, without having to do that, there's more time for them to get, they'll get home quicker, um, able to get their homework done faster, family time, uh, things like that, but again, we've, we've made it work over the last, going on ten years now. Uh, these kids have been amazing, I've been around this program, I coached the very first year, uh, they work hard on and off the field, uh, they're great kids, as Fred said, uh, millions of dollars in scholarships, uh, because they do what, what they should, what they're supposed to do in a classroom and then on the field. Um, and, like I said, it's just, we're just, we're just waiting on this and hoping that you guys will prove it for us, um, and we just, we just appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Damafin Thomas, and I'm a parent who has two kids that attend CCS. My oldest is nine, and he's attended since he was four years old, and my youngest is four, and he's attended since he is, since he was about three months. Um, I'm here to respectfully request your support in voting to make in the CCS athletic field a reality for our student athletes. Our leadership has worked so hard to build this field without incurring any debt. They've personally tried to teach our kids a valuable lesson, not only in loving Christ, but also of being responsible financially. I'm here to support our school tonight, because I have been a student athlete for most of my life, and the majority of my adulthood, so I'm eagerly here and passionate about athletic field, as sports have made a positive impact on my character, my values, as, as well as those of my kids. A growing body of research focuses on the effects of sports, and the five Cs, competence, confidence, connections, character, and caring, which are positive critical com- components of youth development. It, it's important that sports has these facets in the discipline of training, learning teamwork, following the leadership of coaches and captains, learning to lose, all of those provide lifelong skills for our athletes. So, I'm here to implore and request that you support our efforts. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Fern Edman. I have a grandson that goes to this school, and I'm very proud of this school and what it has done, impact the life of my grandchild, and if I get emotional about it, I'm sorry, I, I, you know, I can't say enough about Community Christian School. I have seen these children work together to raise the money to build this sports facility area. They cannot wait to get the lights and the sound, and to get out there and play on that field, and have our visitors come and show what we have worked so hard as a group, uh, as a church, and as a school, uh, to have this facility here for us to share with our community. Uh, our children, this is a way for them to work as a cohesive group, uh, to work together, to learn leadership, to learn how to work together, as well as independently of each other, in order to be a major part of our community. Uh, I think our students have already done that, but we really want to see it to go even further than that. Uh, my grandson cannot wait, uh, he's seven years old, but he cannot wait to get out there on that field and be able to be a part of something very big that he helped to work so hard to raise the money for. Uh, and I can't wait to see him get out there. I want to be out there with them and cheering them on, getting them ready for their future, and this is a good way to build them independently and collectively as better Christians, better individuals, and better citizens for not only this county, but for the state and all across the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mallory Burt. I'm a fifth grade student CCS. I'm in band, and I play the trumpet, and for my future years, I would just love to go on that field and practice and play for my team, just as many people in my class, my grade would also. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? And I think this is the appropriate time for all those wishing to, um, um, that are in favor of this to please stand, as was requested earlier. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll invite the applicant to come back and, um, address any other questions or comments from the board at this time, so we invite the applicant to come back to join, um, join us here at the podium. So, are there any questions or comments from the board?
So, um, I would just like to say, I know we just had a church, and we just had event centers in neighborhoods, and yes, this church is in a residential area. However, the church has been there for over twenty-seven years, um, the church is three miles from my house, and I drive by and see kids out on the field who can't have a speaker to say, he's running down the field, um, and I think that's very, uh, inappropriate and not encouraging to our students. I have talked to the HOAs in the area, and you, you know that I've done my homework with that. Uh, we've checked the other schools, um, private schools in our area to see what they had and how they were able to get their field, so, um, you guys are asking us to remove, um, the conditions here, so I would like to see if the applicant is amenable to, instead of removing the conditions, to amend, um, the conditions, and I'll read what the amendment, um, that my suggestion for the amendment is, if that's okay, Patrick, if that would be the procedure?
That would be appropriate.
Okay, and then if you're okay with the amendments, then I would be willing to support, um, the use. So, you guys had, two, the exterior lighting shall be, um, I'm, I'm changing to, shall be permitted, uh, with an approved plan to mitigate the effect on the neighboring neighborhood, so I know you guys have already done the homework on the lighting. So I know you guys have already done the homework on the lighting. You've talked about having the down cast lights. So we would want you to do that and make sure that you have an approved plan for the lighting. And for the loudspeakers, the same thing. There has to be a plan in place. And that's pretty much set by the Georgia High School Association and the Schools Association. Kids are not outside playing football at eleven-thirty at night. So that's pretty much standard, and we know that will be regulated by the state. And so we want to say that it will be permitted with an approved plan for the loudspeakers. And then for number three, so that addresses two and thirteen, number three, any new buildings or additions shall be architecturally consistent with the ULDC requirements for commercial infield development. So you can do the concession stands and whatever accessories that are needed for the field, but the way CCS is and everything that you guys have added to it, if you would just continue with the modification to make sure that it's in line with what's already there, then if you can agree to those, I know Pastor's here, you gotta raise some money, Pastor. But, so if you guys are amenable to that, then I'll be ready to make the motion to support it.
Yes, we will agree to that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. The floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I would like to make the motion that the applicant's request to-
Chair, if I may.
It may be a good thing for you to add a clause that there needs to be a review of the site plan by our Plan Review Department before they proceed with the installation of everything.
Which site plan?
Just an overall plan of what they're proposing for the site.
Okay, so what I see in here is not the site plan?
Yeah, what we're looking at.
And so what I would suggest, because this is just preliminary and conceptual, that adding to the language of one of these conditions to be modified, to just state that a development plan will be required.
Okay, and the question-
And I just wanted, and that's fine, because I know staff is really good, and I just want to, because we have them here, let's discuss why we're doing that.
I'm sorry, Chair. Could you repeat that question, Commissioner?
You're asking for a review of the site plan?
Yes.
Is that, that's for the additions, the site plan for where the lights would be?
For all the additional materials, the lighting, the concessions, all of that.
Okay, okay. Would you be amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll add a condition that all the site, the site plan will be also presented to the board before-
Plan Review Department.
Okay, stated, and we're ready to move with that.
Does that have to go to the board, or can that just go to zoning?
Is that gonna come to zoning?
It will, it will go through our Plan Review Department. It's through our Building Department.
Okay. So, and prior to you guys going out spending money to get that done, I would suggest that you get a courtesy sit-down with our Plan Review Department to see what you can and what you can and where it can and cannot go. I don't want you to go spend money and then come back for the county to say, "It can't be there."
Yes.
And if you need me, call.
Thank you.
So, do I need to make the motion again?
I think you've made the motion.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I was thinking, we've got the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions, comments, or concern? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your cooperation.
Thank you. We will now move into our next planning and zoning item, which is RZ seventeen-twenty-six, and this is regarding the Southern Consulting LLC of Stockbridge, Georgia requesting a rezoning from RA to C3 for, on the east side of Mount Olive Road, north of Jonesboro Road, and District Two. So, Mr. Rudisal, if you're still there.
Good evening, Chair Wood.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the subject property before you tonight is illustrated on the overhead. Just to get your bearings, this property is located on Mount Olive Road immediately beside the rear entrance to Henry Town Center Shopping Center. So this is indicated in the green-hatched area. It's zoned RA, residential agricultural, and they're requesting a C3. And their letter of intent states that they are requesting C3 for commercial offices. So the Zoning Advisory Board does recommend approval of a commercial zoning, in large part because our future land use map supports it. And they recommend approval of C3 with the conditions that are in your exhibit items. Since that meeting, staff has had conversation with the applicant's representative, and they have stated to us that their intent for C3 is to allow for a possible development of a hotel, which does indeed require C3. So staff has no objection to approval of all C1 and C2 uses, but that the only permitted C3 use would be for hotel. And with the conditions that were recommended by the Zoning Advisory Board, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
So, is the applicant here as well?
Good evening, Chair and Board. My name is Dale Hall, and I'm with Falcon Design Consultants, speaking on behalf of Southern Consulting LLC. Before you is the request to rezone about just under three acres of land along Mount Carmel Road. And we have met with staff and went through the Planning Advisory Board. The applicant is in agreement with the four conditions of zoning, however does request the C3 zoning, as was the intent of the original application, for the use of a hotel use only. We understand the concern for having other C3 uses, and we wouldn't have any issues restricting a C3 use, hotel use only, with C2 and C1 uses. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions or comments before we start the public hearing? Commissioner Clements?
Staff, could you guys answer me, answer a question about hotels? What's the normal acres for a hotel?
It would just have to, it would have to be engineered to make sure that meets the setback requirements and that the parcels actually meets the minimum square footage requirements for the zoning district. So it's dependent upon engineering, and then they have to look at to see if there are things like floodplain, if there's things like wetlands, if there are additional right-of-way beating requirements. So they would have to be engineered to kind of see if the hotel can fit. So it will be contingent upon, they determine if a particular hotel can fit, they'll see if they have a specific elevation that will fit on the parameters. So it's just, it's based on the square footage of the property. So if it's one acre, you're looking at forty-three thousand five hundred sixty square feet, and so on. So it just depends on a number of factors.
Okay. Other questions or comments before we, again, begin the public hearing aspect of it? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, and we will allow anyone wishing to oppose this planning and zoning item to please come forward. There would be a total of ten minutes for those who wish to speak in opposition, and then likewise, we'll give a total of ten minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, would you please come forward now?
Good evening. My name is Scotty Gavin. I live at five hundred Arloom Traditions Subdivision. I don't, I'm not necessarily in opposition. I just had a question for clarity. Could you state what landmarks are there, just from a, I guess, a memory standpoint? The map, the topographic map, just doesn't do much for me in terms of figuring out what street that really is. Like, where is that?
Okay. And we'll make a note of that, and, so let me pause it. But basically, we'll just allow anyone else who wants to come and speak in opposition to come forward, and we'll address your questions after the public hearing aspect of it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Calling again. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. We'll now move into anyone wishing to speak in favor. Calling again. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, Mr. Rudisal, if you will, go ahead and address the question. Again, that just came from the gentleman, our citizen.
Right. So the question was some landmarks about where this subject property is located. The subject property is illustrated on the overhead, and it's highlighted in green with the green-hatched areas here. And so this is where Mount Olive begins, at the intersection of Jonesboro Road. And this large development here is Henry Town Center. So if you were to make your turn, go north on Mount Olive, go past the church that's on the corner, this subject property is immediately past the rear driveway into Henry Town Center. So it is right there, on the right-hand side, on this portion of the road that was paved in the past couple or few years.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions, comments or questions? This does in our public hearing aspect of it. So are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I so move that we would support the Zone Advisor Board recommendation to denial of C3 and approval of C1. If there was a hotel that was coming, I would look at this, but because there is no hotel coming today, I would just like to stick with Zone and Advisor Board's recommendation.
Okay. So we've heard a motion. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
One minute first, is that we had, you made a motion or-
And let me just say again, to where this is, this is the Targets Plaza. Would you point to it again, Stacy? Go back to the other one with the big piece. So this is Target, point to Target, Home Depot, all that, the commercial plaza.
Home Depot is here, the Target is here.
Marshalls.
Right. This is the entire Henry Town Center Shopping Center.
And so this butts up to the commercial piece, right?
Right, right. It's right beside that rear driveway, right here.
Okay.
Okay, so will you restate your motion again?
So I would like to make a motion that we would support Zone and Advisor Board recommendation for denial of C3 and approval of C1 neighborhood commercial.
Okay, so we've heard a motion. Is there a second?
Chairman, I see.
Okay, there is a second. Are there further questions or comments? I think Commissioner Barm, you had a question.
Yeah, I did have a question. Y'all had asked for the C3 for just motels only, right? Do y'all have a client that's wanting to build?
If I, if I may clarify something, there was a very good question asked, how large a hotel site is. If you see on this drawing here, this is the property that's asked for rezoning. The surrounding three sides are C3 presently, and my client owns those properties and would be combining those properties with this property to allow for a larger C3 use. So he is in talks with several individuals because, as you are aware, Mount Olive Road is looking in the future to be, pardon me, expanded to a four-lane road from Jonesboro to Drydoka Road. So this is a perfect location and extremely conducive to a hotel use. If this was going to be recommended for a C1 use and approved that way, my client would ask for it to be tabled for further discussion.
Okay, well, we had, okay, comments?
And I would just like to say again, if you guys, I would be amenable, and I would consider C3 if you had a hotel today. So you can table it and wait until you have a hotel, or we can go with the C1, but I don't want to waste, you know, our time either, you know, if you're looking at the whole piece because you have a hotel. It's a two-way lane now. I don't know what hotel you would have that would come on that two-way road right now. So we're talking about right now.
It's very hard to get a client to commit to a property that doesn't exist in the zoning that they need right now. So that's a double-edged sword. We can't get that one until we get the zoning. Once we get the zoning, then we can move forward.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for denial of C3 to C1. And so now, we've had discussions. Do you have another question or comment?
And so I would say, I understand that, but if it's gonna be a hotel and we're gonna have that condition, I would rather have residents that live in that area here to know that a hotel is going in their community, or the church who's directly across the street, Mount Olive, have, I would have been able to talk to the pastor to say, "Hey, are you okay with the hotel being right across the street from your church?" So it's not a denial of a hotel, but it's a denial today because we're not bringing a hotel today for the community to be here to discuss the hotel.
And we would respectfully request to be tabled. We would be more than happy to meet with the surrounding community to discuss that.
Absolutely.
All right, well, we need to carry the motion forward that we just had. Okay, so we had a motion and a second, or I guess you want to modify it?
Yes, I make the motion to deny, to support Zone and Advisor Board recommendation for denial of C3. Do you want C1 or you don't want C1?
No, we, the applicant wants a C3 for this use because of the three surrounding sides of C3 and the potential client that he has for this.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table. We need to vote on that motion at this point in time. So the motion is, again, to deny C3 but apply C1. So all in favor of that motion, vote in favor. Those that wish to deny. So I didn't see the count really good. So all those who are in favor, raise your hands again. Yeah. Okay, so C1 is, one, two, three. Those that deny, three, three, three. So it's natural the motion failed. Well, she made-
Oh, the C3?
Yeah, we had a motion on the table to deny C3 and to vote for C1. So we had to vote on that motion. And right now, they-
So I asked for it to be supported because I want to give the applicant an opportunity to go to the hotel and say, "Hey, this was not even C1, but the board allowed us to go into the commercial phase. So if you indeed have someone, you could say they moved to C1, and you can let them know. They can look at public records that they didn't go with C3 because there's no hotel now, but at least you know that we went to C1. So we're okay with it being commercial there." So hopefully that helps you, because if you come back again and it's possibly C3, possibly a hotel, that's a different thing. I'm all about the economic development of that area, but I would like to see a hotel there.
All right, seems like we got some questions on the board. So, again, what's the question?
Is all this C3?
It is.
Yes, there are three surrounding sides, three C3, as shown, and all red here. Across the street is not, but that entire area, the closest C1 is, not even on that map.
But y'all asked for C1.
We asked for C3.
Asked for C3, okay.
So basically, we've had a motion that's on the floor that didn't pass. So, sounds like-
You probably should vote on the, on the matter presented. You should vote on the application as submitted. You, if this motion had passed, you could move on, but until there's a successful motion, if, you could make a substitute motion, you could make a new motion, or if you're hesitant doing that.
I'll just allow the applicant to table it.
Well, you have to make a motion. You have to make a motion, and the board has to vote.
Okay. Chair, I so move that we table this applicant's request at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Is there a second? All right, is there a second? All right. Motion did not pass. The floor is now open for a motion. You did?
A second, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So there was a motion and a second to table it. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that concludes all of our planning and zoning items this evening. And so now we'll move into our public comments section, where we definitely welcome our citizens to come and voice their opinions. And we do, for those that wish to speak, require you to sign up with the county clerk prior to the meeting. Each citizen that signed up will be granted five minutes. We do ask again that you please be respectful, talk about operations, and if you have any individual or personal concerns, that you address those with those individuals. So at this time now, we will call forward for our public comments, and we'll look to our county clerk to identify those that have signed up before.
Chair, we have five speakers tonight in this order. Linda Jones, Bill Tony, Larry Maury, Joanne Barber, and Carl Swinson.
Okay, thank you. If you will please come forward in that order. Again, if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Linda Jones, and I live in a tri-county area, Clayton, DeKalb, and Henry Counties. I'm an educated person, and you can see that I'm a senior citizen. I also like to follow the laws to the best of my ability. I'm a law-abiding citizen. On February the 12th, I was followed by a police officer. I wasn't speeding. My car was maintained, so I knew there wasn't a light out. And I was tailgated. The police officer was really close to me, you know, my tail. So I don't know if he was trying to frighten me, to make me move faster, or what it was all about. But I felt intimidated, but I continued to drive at the speed. I was forty-three miles per hour in a forty-five mile-per-hour zone. And eventually, he turned his light on and pulled me over. And eventually, he turned his light on and pulled me over. And at that time, I asked him, I said, now, what did I do wrong? I said, I know I wasn't speeding, but he never answered me. He asked for my driver's license. I gave him my driver's license. He asked me to pull over. It was a four-lane at District Five on Fairview Road, near East Atlanta Road. And so I did, I pulled over, and he took my license and checked it. When he came back, he said, well, when I checked the first time, it didn't go through. And then I checked the second time, and it was okay. So I was a little puzzled by the way it was, that situation was handled. And I tried, well, I did, as a matter of fact, call the department that I felt would be responsible for this type of, you know, action. But I never really got an answer. So I figured maybe if I bring it to you all's attention, you can explain to me what the process is for people that are, you know, moving in at a regular speed, no other problems, but then can't get an answer as to why they were pulled over. I still haven't got the answer in District Five.
Okay, thank you. We'll make a note with our county manager.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. The referendum on the two mills for the water authority. You've got, we've got, Mr. Prince won't be back next year, and I think we've got a couple more running for reelection. I really want to give you a little thought, what you're going to be saying to the people that asked you about this, how come they didn't get their two mills back when you have the opportunity to do a referendum on it? Okay. And I'm asking you for a referendum. I met three ladies that are formed the other night about the sex trafficking in the counties. These three ladies were probably some of the most dedicated women I've ever seen to wanting to take care of kids. What I saw at that forum was kids as young as eight years old being trafficked. We, they have Joanne Sutherland, she's with the Clayton County Fire Department, and they have a program over there. She has check child sex trafficking awareness program. They've tried to break the ice here in Henry County with coming here, and they've, they've not been successful. I'm asking y'all to look at this about starting a program here. You've also got Sabrina Crawford with Gigi's House. I think they're doing great work. When I, anybody with y'all, you need to really sit down and talk with these ladies about getting some programs here. I'm telling you, we need it. This is happening right under your nose. You think about, think about, she had one situation, she had an eight-year-old kid being raped daily. These, these animals that take these kids, they put tattoos on them, they put their names on them, they put, it's unbelievable what they do to these kids. They prostitute these kids 20 times a day. The average lifespan of a kid that's fallen into this is seven years. I just, it just, it hit my heart, and let me tell you, kids are dearer, dearer to me. But I'd like to, I'd like to ask y'all to sit down and talk with these ladies. Now, I'm going to ask you all as a board, and I'd please, if you've ever done anything for me, show me what you're, what you're for right now. If you will sit down with these ladies and talk to them about this, will you give me a show of hands? And y'all are able to do this. Now, this is how I know that I've got your support. Will y'all sit down with these ladies and talk to them? So not a one of you will do it. Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Barham? Johnny, Bruce, June, Dee, Blake? Nobody will sit down with these ladies and talk to them about maybe getting a program started here? I am totally ashamed of y'all. This is beyond, beyond it. Well, I'll tell you what, I hope when people go out to vote, I hope they remember this. Thank you very much.
You know, a few months ago, there was a robbery in Stockbridge. A young man went in with an AK-47 and put his breeches down around his ankles. And a young boy went into a school in Florida, again, with his breeches down, and shot up a school, killing a bunch of kids. You know, when I said something about it, I was asked to, a few months ago, I was asked to leave the podium. I'm going to ask each one of you five, it's undoubtedly that the chairman and I have a major problem, I guess, because every time I try to say something, she wants to throw me down. I think it'd be best for you five to talk to her in the quietness of your hours, because it'll save us a lot of time in federal court. You know, I'm a Native American Indian by blood, but I'm going to see if you got, if you're as bad as you say you are in federal court, and I'm going to sue you independently, miss. We're going to see how good you are.
Thank you for your comments.
I pray a prayer to your brother if you want.
Our next public comment?
How you all doing?
We're good.
Good, good, okay. My name is Joanne Barber, and I live at 176 Sherwood Loop. I'm going to make it real brief. I'm here for the same thing I was here last year for, trying to get my street fixed, trying to get my community fixed. It done left Bridger Road and came over here with a lane. Now, we got a mess over there where I live at. They throw beer cans outside the street, so that's all I come over here for, to try to get my community cleaned up. So would you please come see me?
Yes, I will.
Because it's ugly. And I don't live around trash. I'm a Christian too, and I go to church, and I love cleanliness, and God do too. And we just have to pray for each other, okay? And I love every one of you.
Thank you.
Oh, Lord have mercy. Carl Swinson from Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. Bruce, I just wanted to mention to you that apparently there's been a lot of trash being thrown up on my side of the road on Thurman before it gets to East Atlanta. I don't know, this is kind of more than normal. So if you could kindly get some guys over there to clean that up, there was a tire setting over there this morning. Okay, I want to talk a little bit about water, because there's a high degree of disrespect for water here in this county. And it seems to follow the money, meaning it's okay to build on wetlands as long as you're a developer or part of the Henry County Development Authority. Now, I want to show you something that may not last on the screen too long, so let me just put it up there. I hate it when it does that. Well, see if you can see, oh, you can, you can see that. Now, the interesting part about this is that that is water that's right under that building. And that building was okayed by, maybe not everybody on this board, but previous boards. You okayed the building of this massive, whatchamacallit warehouse on wetlands. You're always doing, you're fringing it a lot of times with these developments, and I see some of them that have houses on the wetlands. So in one sense, we are creating wetlands like we're doing up there at the, at the village park, and I'm not coming down on you about that. I mean, we've got to do something about it, obviously, but, you know, the park is a really nice park, got all that, we really do, but we've got to help the people out next, next door that are being affected, because you really have created another wetland there. But that's the whole point. In 1940s, the Geological Service, is that what it was that came up with the, the wetlands for, for Henry County? Blake, was it the Geological Service that came up with the wetlands for Henry County back in the 40s?
FEMA.
I'm sorry?
FEMA.
It was FEMA? Okay. That is etched in stone, okay? That's stuff that we are not supposed to be able to develop or build on. And yet, this structure, which is just off I-75, excuse me, yeah, just off I-75 and 155 and back of where Pep Boys is, that was built on a creek and what appears to be some sort of little lake. Now, something is amiss when we're allowing a development authority to completely circumvent the law, the laws here, which say you can't build on that, and then they do it anyway. Look at these, all of these developments that are coming before you. Look at them carefully. Look at the, at the, at the wetlands. It's there for you to see. All you've got to do is pull it up on the assessor's office. You don't have to travel very far. But a lot of these places are being developed on these wetlands, and we've got to protect them the best that we know how. And putting developments and structures like this over the top of them, that ain't it. It ain't it. So please, people, look at this stuff, look at it in terms of the long term, how it's going to affect our wetlands and our quality of water, or we're going to be in deep trouble going down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comments section. We will now move into the approval of our amendments for February the 6th, which was a regular Board of Commissioners meetings. Were there any modifications or changes to the amendments? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. We're now moving to our commissioner comments, and at this time, we'll open the floor for anyone that wishes to make any comments at this time. Commissioner Barham?
I too went to the forum down in Locust Grove about the human trafficking, and it was very eye-opening. And I think we do have a problem here in Henry County, I know we do. I was supposed to meet with these ladies yesterday, but I had something else came up, so we had to reschedule. But, you know, at some point in time, I think we need to look into this. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and I wanted to ask Patrick, back in June of 6th, 2017, we had Jim Henderson came down here and talked to us about the two-mill tax at the water ball. Now, this debt's going to be paid off in 2030, and we're obligated to keep collecting this money till 2030. If for some reason we could do away with a two-mill, the water authority would have to increase their water rates substantially. And the only way the two-mills will go on beyond the 2030 is if the Board of Commissioners approves so. We don't need no referendum, we don't need no resolution. There's already a place, it's already in place, it'll go by, and it'll go away in 2030. So to sit here and say we can do something like that when they still owe $198 million is just utterly ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Prince?
I want to address the sex trafficking. Done a bit of research with the police department and some other areas as well. The 138 corridor is a major area for sex trafficking, and I've actually done a preliminary layout for a home for girls who have been sex trafficked. But we can't discuss the location, and we can't discuss anything about it, because the pimps of these girls find out where these homes are, and they'll go get these girls. So everything has to be kind of hush-hush. It's really a shame. And it's so bad that when we're designing these homes, we have to actually secure them where there's one entrance and exit, because these girls will actually be planted in there. If they can get a hold of a cell phone, they'll actually sneak other girls out to go work for another person. So there is some movement in this county, it's just we can't, we can't discuss a lot of it, because we're trying to keep the people who are trafficking the young ladies from finding them. So it's not that we're blind up here, and we've had some help with the GBI here recently. They've gotten involved here in Henry County and are doing some things that we're moving forward. But again, we don't talk about a lot of this just to protect the young ladies. So I just wanted to bring that up.
All right, Commissioner Clements?
And I would just like to just add to that, it's not, you know, sometimes to get girls that are already there is one thing, but to have preventive programs in the community is a whole nother thing. You've got Leader and Me that's doing an awesome job as a preventive program. You've got several programs in our recreation schools, we've got Connecting Henry. So we've got some preventive measures out to make sure that the number is not growing. So, you know, some things have to be left in the hands of preventive measures and then those laws that will help protect the girls. So I would just like to say I agree with the other board members that we are doing some things. We may not be doing what everybody want us to do, but I think that we are supporting a lot of programs. This week, Gary and I, and a couple of the other board members, and School Board, and Parks and Rec, our Henry Hampton City Council, we went on a tour of the county with the Boys and Girls Club. And the Boys and Girls Club is looking to come to Henry County. So we're looking at, we're looking at some preventive measures so that the girls and boys in our community, because it's not, it's not racial, it's not sexual, it's everybody. It doesn't have an age on it. Human trafficking doesn't have an age on it. So, and human trafficking is just not sexual either. So we want to say that this board is taking major steps to make sure that we have preventive measures in place for these type of things in Henry County.
All right, and I guess I need to make a statement about sex trafficking as well. I'm familiar with Sabrina Crawford as well. As a matter of fact, I've attended a couple of the fundraising events that she's had to help support this. I also know Pretty Griffin, who is actually one of the individuals who's doing a lot of training to bring awareness. And I am aware that, you know, our school resource officers through the Sheriff's Department has been trained, and of course, I'm sure there's also room for opportunities, and I agree that we do need to look for more opportunities to address this where appropriate and where we can. But that, this is a major concern, and I appreciate you bringing it to the attention. And then, any other comments on sex trafficking? I wanted to give an ARC-
I'm not on sex trafficking. I'll just say that Mount Olive Baptist Church, which is right there where we're talking about putting the hotel, on Wednesday, there is a viewing of a film that an independent person did, and it's about back page, and it's called Black Girls Die Too. And it's about over 30 girls who are, who died at the hand of sexual exploitation, and so that's a free viewing of that. So if you're truly interested and concerned about what's happening, please come out. And I don't think Pastor Gathers would mind me inviting people out to that viewing. It's Wednesday, next Wednesday night, the last Wednesday of this month, at 6 o'clock PM.
As everyone up here knows, the legislation that's passed, the Senate and the House, everybody else up here also knows that this legislation could have never moved forward without support of the commissioners in the impacted area. So by that, I mean the commissioners that would live in Eagles Landing proper. I'm not opposed to the people of Eagles Landing that want to start their own city. However, I am opposed to the dismantling of the city of Stockbridge. We all know that the city of Eagles Landing is going after all the prime real estate, commercial real estate in the city of Stockbridge. They're going after the medical practices, they're going after technology companies, the engineering firms, they're going after all of those firms that bring revenue to the- They're going after all of those firms that bring revenue to the city of Stockbridge. And leaving Stockbridge with Highway 42, North Henry Boulevard, which has used car lots, used tire shops, towing lots, junkyards, liquor stores. I mean, this is totally unfair. It's never been done in the state of Georgia before. So with that said, being sworn in to protect this county and Stockbridge being the largest city in this county as elected members of this board, we are sworn to protect not just the citizens of McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton, but we are sworn to protect the citizens of Stockbridge. I know everybody is saying there's all kind of dysfunction in the city of Stockbridge. However, if you look at all the mayors over the last 30 to 40 years, they have all come from Eagles Landing. If you look at most of the city council people that have served over the years, they're all from Eagles Landing. So if Eagles Landing create their own city, you're gonna have the same people that were over Stockbridge in charge of the Eagles Landing government. So none of this stuff really makes sense to me. So I'm gonna say today that... And I wrote a letter and took it down to the governor's office. However, I'm not gonna have that much impact on the governor vetoing this legislation. The commissioners that will live in the city's boundaries will have the greatest impact on them veto... On the governor vetoing the dismantling, the pirating of Stockbridge property. So I want to ask the board... As a matter of fact, I had Sherri do a resolution. I'm gonna ask you just to read the resolution, Sherri. And I'm terribly hurt by this. I mean, you know, I kind of went through this thing. I just didn't think that this was actually gonna happen until I saw the votes go up. And I don't live in Stockbridge. I live in North Henry County. But it's almost like there's an attack. Because from Eagles Landing north to Fairview is North Henry County in my book. So it feels like there's an attack on the northern side of the county. They're trying to push truck parking lines to the northern side of the county. I had a meeting with a company last week that wants to put four or five distribution warehouses off a flipping road. You know my position on warehouses. You know my position on pawn shops, used auto places, and semi-truck parking lines. I'm not for it. I'm never gonna support it. We have to have a board that's looking at moving this county into the next century. We have to do it. So I'm gonna ask Sherri to read that resolution. And I'm asking... I'm begging the board to support the city of Stockbridge and support the fact that we don't need to... We don't need to tear down individual cities in this county. If Eagles Landing wants to incorporate, let them incorporate. Let them build their own city. Stockbridge has been around for years. They've worked for generations building up that commercial corridor. And now, we're gonna have one subdivision come and just rip the city apart. It doesn't make any sense to me. Sherri, please read the resolution.
Are you open for an enactment on this board?
We need to amend the agenda. So we need a motion to amend the agenda in order to move forward if there is gonna be some level of action. So the floor is now open for a motion to amend the agenda.
I would like to amend the agenda. And if there are citizens here from the city of Stockbridge, I would allow them the opportunity to speak as well.
Okay. Well, at this point, we've got to get a motion to amend the agenda and allow the public to speak. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. So are there any questions or comments from this board on whether or not to amend the agenda to allow the resolution to be presented and for the public to speak? So that is the motion on the floor right now. So we've got a motion and a second.
We have a public comments section.
And we've passed the public comments section. And so we're again, especially because there's gonna be a move to make an action by the board, we've got to amend the agenda. And I'll look to our county attorney if I'm out of order. Please correct me.
Before the board acts on any new resolution that wasn't on the agenda, you would need to amend the agenda to allow that resolution to be considered. So that would be the proper thing to do. I will say this, and Commissioner Holmes won't like this. While it's certainly within each of your rights to voice your support or opposition to this legislation or any legislation, Georgia law prohibits a government from taking any action whatsoever to influence the outcome of a referendum. The city of Stockbridge legislation, every version of it, calls for a referendum. And it's my opinion that if you vote as a body to take a position that you would in fact be influencing a potential referendum, I think it would probably be an improper thing for you to vote on. You are certainly well within your rights to contact the governor, your legislatures, or anybody you want. But I think... I do think it's improper for the board to take a position on it. I know some cities have done so, and I don't want to speak to their action, but yes.
I was gonna ask, is the board to send a letter to the governor asking him not to dismantle the city of Stockbridge and veto?
Right. And each board member... Yeah, each board member has... Can certainly do that, just like you've done. The concern I have is the board taking official action, voting on a resolution. That's problematic, I think.
Is it possible to have each... To vote that each board member that is in support of not dismantling the city of Stockbridge to write a letter to the governor? Can we take a vote on that?
We have that right now, in my opinion. Do we not have that right?
I don't know that you need a resolution. I mean, each of you can do so.
What we need, we need the three commissioners that live in Eagles Landing property to individually, if they support not dismantling Stockbridge, to write a letter to the governor, saying, hey, we don't want this. We support incorporating the residents in unincorporated Henry County into the city of Eagles Landing. However, we're not trying to take from the city of Stockbridge.
Commissioner Holmes, no action is action. So, I mean, if people... I mean, I don't think... I think what you're trying to do is to get everybody to publicly make a decision. I think they've made a decision. You first, you made the motion. I second. Either we want to bring it or we don't. Let's just vote whether we want to bring the resolution or not. If you don't want to bring the resolution, you don't support supporting Stockbridge.
No, no, you don't support...
But then make a statement.
Well, first of all, we haven't heard the resolution. And what we're hearing right now is that there is some potential things that this board needs to think about regarding the advice that our council has given us. So bottom line is, we've got a motion and a second. And I guess what the motion is, is to hear the resolution...
Amend the agenda to consider...
To allow the public to speak, and then for the board to vote.
To vote on the resolution as drafted.
Okay.
And the resolution that I looked at when the meeting started, I think that's problematic. I think that that...
Well, I want the public to hear the resolution. The public is here to hear the resolution. Why can't we vote? And then you can vote however you want.
Well, we can read the resolution. We can absolutely read the resolution. I mean, now, look, it's... You can vote. You can vote or don't. You're not required to follow my advice. If you want to do something contrary to my advice, that's okay.
Read the resolution.
If it's possible, we'll just... We'll read the resolution. We won't vote on this resolution per se. But what I would like to do, I would like for each commissioner on this board to let the community know if they support dismantling a city in Henry County. That's all. That's all we need to do. Let's just get it out to the public. Let the public know who supports dismantling one of our cities in Henry County, the way we're doing it. Setting a precedent across the entire state of Georgia. That's all we need to do.
Well, let's hear the resolution, and then we can just read it and vote on it now. We're not gonna vote on it. We're not gonna get into that problematic thing.
Resolution of support for the city of Stockbridge pertaining to the de-annexation of certain properties located within the city limits of Stockbridge. Whereas there is pending legislation, House Bill 639 and Senate Bill 263 regarding the creation of a new city referred to as the city of Eagles Landing. And whereas the proposed legislation would amend the charter of Stockbridge and create a charter for the city of Eagles Landing. And whereas three commissioners that reside within the proposed city of Eagles Landing boundaries have the greatest influence on the governor's decision to veto this legislation. And whereas the creation of this new city would create a precedent for the state of Georgia and significantly impact the commercial and residential tax base within the existing incorporated city limits of the city of Stockbridge. And whereas the creation of the city of Eagles Landing would seek to become a city from unincorporated properties in Henry County as well as a large amount of properties within the incorporated boundaries of the city of Stockbridge. And whereas the incorporated properties within the city of Stockbridge would result in an approximately 50% loss to its commercial tax base. And whereas over the last decade, the city of Stockbridge has made conservative efforts to increase its commercial tax base and enhance and improve the city's infrastructure. And whereas the board recognizes that citizens should have the right to form their own city from unincorporated properties within Henry County, but does not support the use of incorporated properties to create a new city. And whereas the proposed creation of the city of Eagles Landing will defeat the purpose of those efforts set forth by the city of Stockbridge and impair the city's ability to ensure that adequate services are provided to its citizens in the future. Now therefore be it resolved that given that a majority of the commissioners residing within the proposed city of Eagles Landing boundaries supports the city of Stockbridge objection to House Bill 639 and Senate Bill 263. And the Board of Commissioners will authorize the chair to sign and deliver to the governor such resolution.
All right, we've heard the reading of the resolution, but we had a first and a second to hear the resolution, but we never addressed whether or not we were gonna amend the agenda to address this concern. So again, the floor... We had a motion and a second to amend the agenda. We heard some conversation. Who's in favor of amending the agenda to move forward?
The resolution itself is improper.
I'm sorry?
The resolution itself is improper.
Yes.
I like factual things. I don't believe that three commissioners live in the Eagles Landing area. Live or represent? You said live in the resolution, and that's improper?
Well, again, let's address whether or not we're gonna amend the agenda to have further conversations and to discuss more about the resolution. So we had a first and a second motion to amend the agenda. All in favor of amending the agenda to talk more about this resolution and to go forward, please raise your hand. All that oppose? Motion fails. All right. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Hearing that, county manager, are there any comments that you have to offer this evening?
I do have just one general comment. I wanted to announce that tomorrow, we will officially go live with our See Click Fix application. That's exciting news for us. So I just do what... I want to put up on the overhead just what it will look like. But a lot of the concerns that were raised tonight in terms of potholes, stormwater issues, it will now be at your fingertips. So if you have a smartphone, whether it's an Android or an Apple product, you will be able to download this app at no cost to you as a resident, and then submit your request. If you'll notice, the application, you will see on the app, you'll be able to just click Report. Once you click Report, it will ask you where you're located. I've already been entered into the system, so it didn't ask me. But it'll pick up a GPS system in terms of where you're located so that you're not trying to figure out where the specific address is. And if you want to report litter... Litter's on here. Let me just click one so you can get a general idea. Grading of roads, you'll be able to enter the information. Place your destination on there, and it'll ask you, does the road need gravel as well? Sort of asks for details. Once you submit that information, you'll hit Done. And then once you complete it, you'll hit Submit. Of course, it's telling me that I've got to put additional information in. But once you put the information in, you'll receive an email back saying that we've received your request. And then you'll be able to follow that request. It will even ask you if you want to be updated on the status of the request. So we're really excited about this and hoping that this will help in our turnaround time in terms of responses and inquiries that may be coming in. So again, I just wanted to announce that, and that's all I have for this evening.
Okay. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, on February the 27th at 9 o'clock, there will be a workshop meeting. And then on March the 6th at 9 o'clock, will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And at this time, there are no other items on the agenda, so the floor is now open for a motion to adjourn.
Chair, so move the weed with adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.